All right, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Village of Oklaun Board of Trustees regular meeting agenda. We are meeting here today in the Village Hall Auditorium, 9446 South Raymond Avenue. This is meeting number 2024-10, Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, and it's 9:00 a.m. Call the order, please, roll.
Mayor Vorder.
Present.
Trustee Stocker. Trustee Desmond.
Here.
Trustee Sack.
Here.
Trustee Pembroke.
Here.
Trustee Mallow.
Here.
We have a forum.
Can I have a motion to allow trustee Olenichak to participate by phone due to work?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion approved. Trustee, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay, let's move on on the agenda. Let's join the pledge allegiance. Veterans, please salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are greatly honored today to be able to present the Oklaun Police Department Award of Valor to Sergeant Finbar Haran. Is that how you say it, Haran?
Morning. First of all, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to present this at the board meeting today. I'd also like to welcome retired Secret Service and Orland Park Chief of Police, Tim McCarthy. On March 11th, 2024, shortly after 12:00 p.m., Oklaun officers responded to a shooting at a business in the 10800 block of Central Avenue. The first officers on scene learned that Sergeant Finbar Haran, who was off duty and working as security detail, was the person who was shot. Sergeant Haran was working his first time as a security guard at the business that afternoon, accompanied by a second security guard. A disgruntled truck driver arrived in the parking lot after driving halfway across the country in front of the business's management, and had to halfway across the country to confront the business management in person. While the employees' argument with the management began to escalate and a crowd gathered, Sergeant Haran took up a tactical position to intervene if necessary while flanked by the second security guard. When Sergeant Haran began speaking with the employee, in an attempt to calm him down, the employee became fixated on Sergeant Haran. The employee, who was standing at the front of a pickup truck on the passenger side, began to walk away along the side of the truck to its rear, putting the truck between himself and Sergeant Haran's cover. The employee then pulled a concealed .45 caliber handgun from his jacket as he quickly moved to the back of the truck and around towards the driver's side of the vehicle to the rear, and was met by the employee coming around the vehicle. Without warning, the employee produced the weapon and began firing at Sergeant Haran, who was feet away, striking him five times with the large caliber bullets. Sergeant Haran attempted to physically subdue the employee as the two began to grapple, and both men fell to the ground. The battle continued as Sergeant Haran repeatedly struck and wrestled with the employee back to the pavement. Even after being shot five times, Sergeant Haran stayed in the fight and was able to take the employee into custody with the assistance of the second guard and bystander. Sergeant Haran then applied a tourniquet to his own leg that was bleeding badly before paramedics arrived to rush him to the hospital. There is no doubt that the employee came to the business to inflict a large number of casualties on the employees he felt wronged him. When searched, two additional fully loaded magazines were recovered from the employee's person, and he later showed no remorse when interviewed by the detectives. However, the employee had not planned on meeting a warrior that day, who was ultimately foiled the planned carnage, even though it nearly cost Sergeant Haran his life. Sergeant Haran is a hero who saved countless lives that day, including his own, by moving towards danger, attacking the deadly threat, and never giving up. Sergeant Haran's bulletproof vest, courage, and valiant effort made all the difference that day. For these exceptional reasons, Sergeant Finbar Haran is most deserving of an Oklaun Police Department Medal of Valor.
State is yours.
I just want to thank the board, thank the chief for their continued support of the police department. The training and resources we get makes a big difference, so I want to thank my wife who would take care of me, all the guys that were here, and continue to show up every day. So it's a great department. I'm happy to work here.
Thank you. Sergeant Chief, you guys well know this board greatly appreciates the work you do to keep our community the quality of life that we all expect. I appreciate it. I'm honored to have been part of that organization. It's probably the hat that I wore with the most pride in the course of my career, and this board certainly appreciates the work you do. Congratulations, not only to the sergeant, but to every one of you guys who continue to give your 110% to the Village of Oklaun. Thank you again. All right, if you want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, please feel free. Maybe you want to go have breakfast, have a party. Go ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, buddy. Luke, Maggie's downstairs. You want a bucket? Hey, bud.
Was Reagan's pudding, Captain?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe we should've waited till the end.
They would've killed Jeff.
At least we would've had a kraut.
Sure know how to empty.
Now we'll be done in about eight minutes.
Guess nobody signed up for public comment.
Oh, that's a good thing, too, huh? Get through this meeting as quick as possible.
Yeah, it feels like you should leave, too. I don't know. It's a weird situation that just happened.
Awkward.
All right, party's off.
Yeah, right? Chief, thanks for bringing people to our meeting. That was great.
Yeah.
At least recruitment video, maybe. They could've clapped for their recruitment video.
Oh, never even thought about that. All right, Madam Clerk, any public comments?
There are none.
Any trustee have any problem with any issue on this agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the approval of the closed meeting minutes of 2024-04, dated April 23rd, 2024. Motion, please.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak. Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. Approval of regular meeting minutes, 2024-09, dated May 14th, 2024. Motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak. Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Sorry. Motion passes. All right, Oklaun Police Department recruitment video presentation. Say about this? Nope, that'll be the chief. Okay, chief, you still here?
Yeah, we're still here. No, I just wanted to announce that we are now accepting applications for law enforcement. It's been a struggle in the past year or two, not just with the Oklaun Police Department, but nationwide, to recruit for law enforcement. So with the help of our grant coordinator, Vern, and H.R., and then everybody else, anybody else that I missed, we've built an effort into a recruitment program. So with that being said, we were able to obtain a grant, which allowed us to do a recruitment video, and also got other ways of putting it out there now. We've gotten, we've been using that grant to, it's also a retention grant, to pay our younger officers to stay with the department. So depending on their years of service with that grant, we got anywhere between $2,000 and $6,000 retention bonus. And this has also allowed us to advertise to a bigger platform. We're using more digital efforts with the Chicago Tribune, BlueLine.com, which I just checked it last night before I went to bed. We're up to about 3,000 hits. And then our video that we're about to see on YouTube is over 4,000 views. So, and when I spoke to Karen last week before the holiday, we were up to about 40 applications, which is more than we got last time combined. So it appears that our recruitment efforts are working, so hopefully we'll have a good pool of candidates to choose from. Applications are now available online or downstairs, and they're, we're accepting them on the 21st.
I think we all get into this profession for the same reason. We want to make a difference. We want to protect people and, you know, be the change that we want in our communities. And Oklaun has afforded me that opportunity to do just that. Oklaun had always been portrayed to me as the flagship police department for the area.
We're one of probably the top paid departments in the Chicago suburbs.
It's definitely a good department.
We're very forward-thinking here. We're very up to date on our tactics and our training. We have a lot of advancements. It's a large enough police department where there's a lot of opportunities, and the leadership here actually wants to see you do well. They want to see you succeed.
They support us with training. They support us in our actions and in our enforcement activities. It's a really family-oriented police department.
This really is, you know, a police department where everyone gets along well.
We celebrate everybody's triumphs. We laugh together.
We joke around a little bit here, but when it's time to get the job done, everyone here does an excellent job. Community support is huge for the Oklaun Police Department, and it really starts at the top. Starts with the Board of Trustees. I couldn't have asked for a more supportive group.
They give us tons of support.
Our village manager, our entire administrative staff, they are behind us 100%, and that really just trickles down to the residents.
It's a great community. There isn't a day that goes by where at least one person comes up to me, tells us how much that they like living in Oklaun because of the job that we do, and that means a lot to me. So they're a very, very supportive community.
There are a lot of benefits to working for the Oklaun Police Department.
We have a really competitive benefits package. I know that's important to a lot of people. One of the things that Oklaun has that very few other departments have is topping out after three years, meaning you're going to make the most amount of money after only three years, because opposed to other departments who get there at seven.
And also, any officer who makes his primary residence in Oklaun, they receive an $8,000 annual tax credit.
We have a lot of advancement opportunities.
Even though we're a suburban department, we have a lot of specialty positions to offer.
Like myself, I'm an evidence technician. We have a drone division.
Field training officer, as a range officer.
The dare officer, the bike patrol officer, detective.
We currently just formed our own special response team, which is a SWAT team.
There are so many ways to get involved in this department, and it's good to have these programs because it helps us to connect with our community.
And getting experience in all those roles contribute to your resume.
Whether you're looking to start a career in law enforcement or lateral from another department, Oklaun is a great place to consider with all the advancement that we would be able to afford you. The qualities that we're looking for in a new hire is most of all integrity.
A stand-up type of person, somebody that's trustworthy.
If you're looking for a department that has a strong sense of support for their officers, Oklaun is going to be the department you want to choose.
Our community supports us. They love us. The village supports us. They love us.
It's just a great department to be in.
Policing's a hard job, but if you're going to do it, Oklaun's a great place to be a police officer.
Any comments?
Excellent.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to new business by trustee. District one.
Thank you, Mayor. No new business.
District two, Alex.
I have no new business.
And district three.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. Number one, property tax bills. Numerous residents have inquired to me that their tax bill has gone up. They don't understand why. I just want to kind of put it out there. As far as numbers, we did have something in our latest Oklaun Matters regarding the percentages. Oklaun remains at 10% and has remained at 10% for quite a time now. The public schools system takes up about 70% of that tax bill. Recent story by Channel 7 came out with what the state puts in, and currently the state puts in 24%, where most average states put in 47.5%. So a lot of that money ends up being part of the municipality's fee instead of what the state's put in. So the state is really in a lot of trouble in a lot of different ways as far as money. So I just wanted to put that out there. Where we are at is where we are at, so hopefully these other taxing districts can look at their budgets, see if they can reduce to help the community in where we are at as far as property tax bills, because they are going up in some instances $3,000 to $4,000, and it's just not something that can be sustained. Channel 7 News obviously put out this story where I'm getting some of this information. It's called "The Property Tax Apocalypse." It was put out by Ann Pistone and Jason Knowles, and in that system, our actual Cook County Treasurer, Maria Pappas, said it's a broken system. So obviously, we have issues with that, so we do what we can. I know people appeal their taxes, do that, try to help, but the system just doesn't seem to be working, so please reach out to your elected officials, state senators, state representatives, school boards, library boards, you know, to help them look at those financial issues, see if we can help that. But on a better note, other than the property tax bills, which hurt so many different people at this time, we have our first Sunday concert coming up this Sunday. Again, the time is 6:00 to 8:00. We reduced our time back to 6:00 to see if we can get some more people there, so hopefully that entices some of the younger families to come out with their kids to see the Mixtape Junkies, and they will be starting at 6:00 p.m. The last thing is the July 4th parade. That will be on June 29th. It will start at 3:00 p.m. It will be on 95th Street, as typical, and Five Guys Named Mo will perform at 6:00 p.m. on the Village Green. We hope to see the residents there in full force, as typical, and hang around for the later concert, so that ends my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. District four.
No new business, Mayor.
And district six.
Just, I just want to comment on that video and Sergeant Haran, the police department as a whole. To hear that video and to hear those officers foremost talk about this board, how we support the police, that rings home with all of us, right? That's what we want to be known as. That makes me proud to sit up here as a trustee in this village. For our police department, no, they have 100% support from this board, and I love the fact that we live and breathe it, and it shows in the people that we've got as officers in this town. It's the best bar none, and I couldn't be prouder as a trustee of that, so I just had that. And then a week from tomorrow, St. Catherine's Carnival starts for five nights, so first carnival of the summer. Come on out, have a good time. We fully support it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, trustee. Village managers' report.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
Just, I should've mentioned this, but I just want to comment on trustee Mallow's about the taxes, and he's 100% right. And the one thing we have to remember is, all these taxing bodies that are voting to raise these taxes, school board, the library, the park district, they are all elected positions. The people voted these people in, and now they're voting to raise taxes. So the people can hold these people responsible. Please remember that the next time these people are up for election, you elected them, they're voting to raise taxes. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee. Village managers' report.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just, I wanted to follow on what trustee Sack spoke about, our police department, and as I read the chief's recounting the incident with Sergeant Haran, and I was watching Tim McCarthy, Mayor, you mentioned the former Orland Park Police Chief. I was a freshman in high school when Tim McCarthy was protecting President Reagan and was shot, and it's now become a famous video. And too often, I think, you know, we think of things historical, you know, movies, and as the chief was reading the recounting of that incident, you know, I almost was struck by, oh, this sounds like a movie, until you watch that video, and I watched it. It's terrifying. I mean, you get sick to your stomach to see how, I mean, it is, there is no discounting the fact that that was an unbelievable heroic act, the fact that he was able to, after being shot, detain that gentleman, gentleman, I shouldn't say, a criminal sociopath who, after that incident, chief, I think his comment was, he's lucky my gun jammed, or...
No, he basically said he's lucky my gun jammed, or he didn't bet.
And that goes to this issue, you know, with society today, where all this crime is, you know, excuse, make excuses for. We had a five-year-old shot over the weekend in the city, 3:00 in the morning, a five-year-old. Nobody on the news says, what is a five-year-old doing up at 3:00 in the morning, right? It's immediately, it's downplayed. A friend of mine from the neighborhood is retiring soon from the state police as a master sergeant. He said four or five years ago about criminals, he said it was terrifying when they didn't fear police. He said, now it's unmanageable because they don't fear dying. And you watch that video, that guy didn't care about dying or living, and, you know, as I said, I don't want to take anything away. That was an unbelievable act, but I think we need, as I think back to being freshman year and watching the video of Tim McCarthy and the other gentleman who got shot in the head, I can't recall his name, the press secretary, Brady, I think.
Brady, yeah.
This is real, and until our society comes to grips with the fact that there are bad people that need to be treated differently, not all of them need to be excused and rationalized and defended. They need to be in jail forever, as far as I'm concerned, and that particular gentleman is one of them. But again, you know, I don't know, I was at a loss for words, conflicting emotions of how heroic event it was and how credible it was, and looking at his wife and thinking how close he came to getting killed. It's just unbelievable. And again, pivoting not to great news, but to trustee Mallow's point, I think it is important to know, and we do get calls about that all the time, property tax, property tax, property tax, and until, you know, we started trying to educate people through our newsletter, which will be hitting Oklaun doorsteps in the next seven days, by continually putting in there and updating the taxing bodies within Oklaun, and of them, there are many, while you have it with you, right? Dozen plus.
There's 13.
Multiple, 13, multiple county agencies, but it is primarily the schools. And again, we all want and need good schools, good public schools, even those of us who send their kids to parochial schools or private schools. You need good public schools. At the end of the day, this board, going back more than a decade, probably almost 15 years, you know, has done a great job of taking what we need from residents. Too often, taxing bodies take what they can, where they're allowed by law to levy up to an amount, and they just take it, and they find ways to use it, or not. Some of them are sitting on multiple millions of dollars, you know, 70, 80, 90 millions of dollars, and oftentimes looking for things to spend it on. You know, this board, going back several years, decided, and as I've talked in the past, too, the bond rating agencies criticized us for it, and in some cases, you know, downgraded us for not having a lot of money in the bank, you know, multiple millions of reserves, they call. Why don't you have reserves? And our answer was, because we're a home rule community, and we could pass a home rule tax, and within three to six months, start collecting on that money. We also had a line of credit forever, $5 million, that we never borrowed again, and then only occasionally, and then paid it back. I think that's the critical element here, as trustee Desmond talked about, is, you know, oftentimes, boards get elected, and they don't get into the weeds of what an operation needs and rely upon staff who need their jobs, want their jobs, and too often are afraid to cut their budgets for fear of not getting that money the next year. So it's the same as last year, plus five, they call. What's your budget next year? Same as last year, plus five. I just wanted to kind of reiterate what trustee Mallow and Desmond said. Is this board, this organization, I think has done a great job in that regard. I think trustee Mallow, you said our tax levy today is lower or the same as it was in 2010?
Correct.
Yeah. I just think that's worth repeating. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. That was well spoken, and I'd like to say that the problem goes beyond our school boards and our local schools. It goes down to Springfield. Their new budget is increased by $750 million, which is going to be a tax on us. This whole school funding program has really got to be solved in Springfield. We do the best we can here in the Village of Oklaun, but we can only have so much control and power over property tax, and it is running people out of the state. My property tax bill's 15 grand now. Certainly affects the value of your home, I'm sure. All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda. All items under consent agenda or routine are brought forward at direction of the Board of Trustees, village manager, or village committees, and will be enacted with one motion. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A, request Board of Trustees approval and direction of the Fire and Police Commission to promote one lieutenant and one sergeant from the current eligibility list due to retirement. B, request the Board of Trustees approval of the Zoning and Planning Commission's recommendation 5-0 for a building variation for construction of an eight-foot by 10-foot metal shed in an M1 restricted manufacturing zone district at 5451 West 110th Street. C, ordinance 24-10-33, an ordinance granting a variation for construction material requirements for the construction of that metal shed on the property located in the M1 Restricted Manufacturing District at 5451 West 110th Street. D, ordinance 24-10-34, an ordinance amending Title IX, Chapter IV, Article B, Section 9-4B-2, water rate charges of the Village of Oklaun Code. E, ordinance 24-10-35, an ordinance authorizing the village to dispose and sell surplus equipment, glycol thermalizer, ProMelt, and related material, and authorizing the purchase of a new paint strip unit, that's a Grayskull line laser for the street department. F, Resolution 2410-41, a resolution approving a bid from Hoar Construction Incorporated for 2023-2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of $1,223,756. And G, Resolution 24-10-42, a resolution approving and authorizing the change in designation of authorized signers and agents for the investment account held by the Village of Oklaun on behalf of the Oklaun Fire Pension Fund with the Illinois Municipal Investment Fund. And H, Resolution repealing, a resolution repealing Resolution 24-09-36 regarding authorizing a contract with KLF Enterprises Incorporated for abatement and demolition services at 5210 West 95th Street in the amount not to exceed $141,000. Motion, please.
Motion approved.
Second.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to pull item F.
F?
F.
Okay.
The resolu, oh, I'm sorry. Too early. The roll first.
All right, we're voting for everything except the Resolution F.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Olenichak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. F is Resolution 24-10-41, a resolution approving the bid from Hoar Construction Incorporated for the 2023-2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of $1,200,000. for the 2023-2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation program in the amount of $1,223,756. A motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Okay, discussion?
There was a clerical error in the dollar amount. So the dollar amount stated on the agenda was $1,223,756. The correct amount is $1,213,856. So it's actually about $10,000 difference there.
You like to save money.
Correct. So if I can have a motion to approve the resolution as amended?
So moved.
With the dollar amount.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. 13, this is a motion to remove the request for the fund run hosted by Metroform Health and Fitness from the table. Motion, please.
I'll motion to remove it from the table.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion approved. And 14, it's request the Board of Trustees approval of the fund run hosted by Metroform Health and Fitness on Saturday, September 14th, 2024, at 5201 West 95th Street. Motion?
I'll motion to approve it.
A second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion approved. 15, motion to remove the request to waive the village incurred fees for the fund run from the table. Motion?
I'll motion to remove it from the table.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, 16 is request Board of Trustees approval to waive the village incurred fees of $5,192.54 associated with the fund run on Saturday, September 14th, 2024. Motion?
I motion to deny the waiving of the fees.
Second.
A motion to deny the waiving of the fees. Roll call on that motion?
Trustee Desmond.
Yes, to deny.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, village clerks' report.
Disbursement Resolution Number 2024-10D, dated May 28th, 2024, in the amount of
Motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Desmond.
Yes.
Trustee Sack.
Yes.
Trustee Pembroke.
Yes.
Trustee Oliniechak.
Yes.
Trustee Mallow.
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else, Madam Clerk?
Nothing.
All right, village clerks, just a couple of things. I want to mention that this Saturday, June 1st, will be the Blue Ribbon Walk, 11:00 AM at the Lake Shore Park. This is an event put on by one of our local residents for the past 10 years. It honors the service of our police department. Very fitting that we announced this today in light of the heroism that was displayed here. It's been going on for 10 years, and I would recommend all citizens to come out. It's a short walk. There will be some food and an event there. I also would like to mention the fact that annually, the Oaklawn Garden Club does a walk of some of the residents in our home, okay, to look at the beauty of their yards. My house has been on it a couple of times myself, but not this year. That will be on Sunday, June 23rd, 2024, 1:00 PM to 5:00 PM. The ticket price is $10, and those tickets can be purchased at the Schroeder Garden Center at 108th and South, West Highway, or on the day of the event at the gazebo, 9400 South Cook, right here. Again, the date is June 23rd, and the time of the walk is 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And I just want to comment on yesterday, a Memorial Day event that the VFW put on here at our War Memorial. As I had mentioned, to me, Memorial Day is the most important holiday of this country. Without the men and women who have died, over 1,021 of them, Oaklawn residents, we wouldn't have had any other holiday. It was very rewarding to see more than 200 people there to participate in that event, and I thank you, Oaklawn, for coming out and supporting such an important holiday. And with that, I will take a motion for adjournment.
adjournment?
A second?
I got it.
Roll call in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Thank you for coming out, everybody.